Perfect timing, Audra.
Pesos.
Are we live, Janice?
Yeah, we're live.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for March 1st, March 4th, 2020. Before I get into the agenda, I'd like to have a side note before the agenda with the board's permission to recognize the passing of one of our stalwarts in the Town of Camden, Jimmy Kerstedt, passed away last week at a young 70-years-old. Everybody that knows Jimmy knows his contributions to the town have been huge. He was on volunteer fireman for over 25 years. He was on Masonic Lodge for over 40 years. He was on the planning board of the Town of Camden for 12 years, a select board member, and numerous committees and organizations, not the least of which was his active participation and allowing us to have the memorial wall for the veterans in Village Green. In addition to his many accomplishments, Jimmy was an accomplished mason. His memories are all over our town here in terms of his masonry work he's done at the entrance to Oak Hill Cemetery, to the entrances to Quarry Hills, to the repairs at the library and the amphitheater over his time period. Quite an individual, and we certainly are going to miss him. I think, you know, the town has lost him for a while due to his illness that he finally succumbed to. And to his, most importantly though, to his wife Linda and family. The town wants to express their heartfelt condolences. There's nothing we can say that's going to assuage their grief at this point, but we want them to know that his contribution to the town is greatly appreciated, and he and his memory will live in our thoughts and prayers forever. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
With that, we will head into our agenda, which our first item will be public input on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address a non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands, we'll go to item two, which is select board reports. Allison, do you want to go first to get your stuff done?
Sure.
Go.
So, I spent the last 10 days or so, or actually I got back about 10 days ago, but before that, about 10 days in California. It's always fun to just see different ways that things are being done in different places. And one of the things I was most struck by was the cyclist infrastructure. And of course, they don't have to deal with the snow a lot of the time, but, or really any of the time. So that does make things easier for designing streets, but it was, when I first got into San Francisco, I was driving, and it felt really chaotic. Like, there were a couple of times when I was like, "Oh, my gosh, a biker just came up behind me, and I wasn't expecting it." And it's, they had it arranged in such a way that if anybody ever proposed something like that in Camden, I would say, "That's insane, that's dangerous," even being the pro cyclist lane person that I am. But I pretty quickly adjusted to looking for those, you know, the green lanes everywhere. And so, that was just interesting. Then, the day I got back, I guess it was a week ago, we had the DOT pedestrian safety forum. There's going to be another one on the 31st at the middle school again, so if you didn't make this past one, then it's not too late. But the turnout wasn't quite as good as I think it would have been if it had been on that first day. But I thought it was one of the better, probably one of the best municipal meetings, sort of community input meetings that I've attended. There was, Mark, you were there too, and Audra and some town staff, but it was, I don't think every single thing that needed to be said wasn't necessarily said, but we were able to rank, or community members were able to highlight priorities, sort of hotspots in Camden where they don't feel safe. And it was, a lot of it was just focused around Route 1. I did livestream it on the Town Facebook page, so anybody who didn't watch it, I think it's actually something that really is worth watching. There was a lot of talk about the crosswalks out here and distance that people can park from the crosswalks and that kind of tension between the need for parking downtown and the need to be safe for pedestrians. And actually, Stephanie gave a really, really articulate summary of some of the issues that they have noticed in the office over at the Allen Agency, because they've obviously crossed there so much. So I think that's really worth watching, and I think, I hope that maybe we could think about doing more meetings like that, where it's not such a formal public hearing, but people just get an opportunity to come in and give their ideas on different things in the town, whether it be, I don't know, EMS, or the snowball, or the river stuff at some point. Next, just a quick little thing, I always enjoy sharing photos of the harbor. This was last Thursday, and we had some strong winds, and I was actually down there because a company called Summit was there doing some borings in this, the back of the Harbor Park bank there to get a better understanding of where the ledge is. So, we're facing a lot of erosion issues there, and at some point, there may need to be changes to the seawall or to the way the river comes in. And it was important to know, you know, how much of that bank is just sediment and how much is ledge. And so, they'll have the information from that in a couple of weeks, probably. But while we were down there, we started noticing that the waves were coming up quite a bit, and I looked at the tide chart, and I said, "Oh, well, even, don't worry, even if, even with the storm surge, even with all this wind, there's no chance of the seawall overtopping today, according to everything that I've been looking at. 11.9 feet high tide is normally the, what I, dead calm is what it takes to overtop the seawall there." And it was only supposed to be 9.8 feet, so I was very confident. But then, when I came down, this was actually a full hour after high tide. And, oh, whoops, here we go. Let's see if we can play it. But it was, the wind was coming from the south or the southwest, so it, or was it the southeast? I forget. Southeast. But it was just really interesting what a difference it made in, and this is obviously just getting sloshed up to pieces, but it was, it's actually kind of an aesthetically pleasing effect with the water coming back down. I don't know if we ever redesign the seawall, it might be nice to do something like that. But that, I just found interesting. The public landing side was in rough shape, too. This is just another little thing that I wanted to share from today. Does anybody know where this is?
Is that near Atlantic Avenue? Yeah, the Boathouse?
Good. So I'd never gone over to this side before. They're going to be, DOT is going to be doing a little bit of work on the High Street Bridge, because some of these rocks that are very similar in the High Street Bridge are starting to fall, and they need to be doing some shotcrete repairs. And so, they were trying to determine whether they needed to be concerned about smelt spawning downstream from that. And so, I figured I'd just go out and take a couple of pictures for them to make it a little easier. And it's just such an example of a terribly designed road. Back when we didn't know any better, it's, you know, completely cuts off the ability of fish to get from the ocean up to that little area where it used to be a really popular, if you look at the old Camden Herald articles, you can find that, this is called, was called Daley's Brook back then, and not many people know it by that now, but it was a really popular smelting location. And maybe someday.
Extreme crossing grant next year.
Yes, although I don't really, I've always kind of looked at that, the Atlantic Avenue massive wall, and it's like, I don't know if there's any going back once that kind of thing happens, but I know that maybe the force main has to go through there for the sewer project, and maybe we could do something and use the granite for something else. Anyway, just a little, it's not just dams that impact fish passage, it's also all these culverts. So, if you can start to learn to look out for places like this, there are a lot of stream crossing grants available, and we should like them. Thank you for indulging me for all that time.
You're indulged. Patrick, did you want to say something to that?
Yeah.
You're going to have to say it to the mic. I'm sorry about that, but.
Sorry, you want to do the whole announcement?
I'd like to know who you are. Audrey McCafferty, resident of Camden. Just a quick question, one picture back. Is that, is that on a, the, great, is that like on an incline, that pipe?
It's, the pipe?
It's a flow-through, it's probably supposed to be level.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
So that means like this side is sagged?
Yeah.
And it's like, seriously, like effectively lost its function, almost?
No, it works very well. So when the tide comes up, it actually allows backflow from, so you end up with saltwater on this side. Most of the stream is actually going through this lower culvert.
Over there to the right.
Yep.
But, and I was excited at first, thinking, "Oh, the fish can get through there." But when you go through on the other side, it's like, it's not at all straight, it curves around, and, and I actually didn't realize that over on this side here, the Town of Camden has a relatively large, I mean, we own a little bit of land there, it's a nice place to sit and, I don't know.
Do you see the two culverts come out on the other side?
Right.
Exactly. And so, when I'd seen this, I thought, "Oh, maybe they can get through it there," but it's.
Curious if that was designed to be that way, because it's obviously at an incline, or if it's sagged and thus less, loses functionality.
I suspect it was designed flat, straight, level. Marco.
Are you done? Allison?
Yeah, she said she would.
Okay. I've got a number of things. Number one, we had a capital campaign select board meeting a few weeks ago, where we discussed...
Capital planning.
Capital planning. Discuss.
Did I miss that one?
Where we discussed some of the long-term planning that we need for the town, a lot of infrastructure and things like that. And one of the things that didn't come up in that meeting, but I wanted to make note of, we recently had a study, infrastructure study for the sea rise and flooding risk for the public landing. And Audra, there's a terrific article in Village Soup, you can see online, or it was in the February 10th, February 10th was the date of it. And Audra talks about the long-range planning that we're going to do for the landing and dealing with sea level rise and things like that. And I think it's important people know that we're looking into the future and working on issues like that, and I want to make sure I mention that. Number two, I of course want to talk about the Opera House, some great things recently. SIF had a mini film festival, Cabin, Cabin, was it?
Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, it was Friday and Saturday, and Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, sorry.
What was it, Cabin Fever? And went Saturday night, and it's a reminder about how well, what a great job they do, the films they bring out are just excellent. And I'm always amazed that I find that often the documentaries that they bring in are more enchanting and more exciting and more satisfying than commercial fiction films. And it was a tremendous achievement, I think they have a little mini film festival in the middle of winter, and I look forward to next, next fall when the big festival, it's just an amazing thing. Other thing, this month is a really busy month at the Opera House. And one of the things that's happened is, Blue Cafe is something that they've developed in the last year or so up in the third floor of the Opera House, a free event on Friday nights. And looking at the calendar, Dave Morrison, the director, has expanded, it used to be once a month, now they've expanded it, there'll be some additional dates in, because it's become so popular. The last one, a few weeks ago, it was another virtually, it's sold, it's free, so you can't really say sold out, but packed event. And the interesting thing, there was a band from Boston that came up, and the next day, they've got a phone call from another artist from Boston saying, "Hey, I would love to play there as well." So, you know, even coming all this way, the bands are finding out about, so it continues that. The next one is multi-instrumentalist Nikos Apal, Apal, Apaloneo, I can't pronounce his name, multi-instrumentalist playing a bunch of different instruments. That is Friday, March 27th. There is a SIF, every month has a documentary. Wednesday, March 25th will be The Booksellers. Made Made Music, another one of the events we do using main artists, is coming, it's a little mini festival, and that's coming on the, what's the date of that?
March 14th.
March 14th at 7:30. And somebody we know's wife will be in one of the bands, so I recommend, it's going to be a great appearance, so you should do that. The Camden Middle School is producing James and the Giant Peach, Friday, March 20th, Saturday, March 21st.
Great one.
Which would be great. There is a benefit for Wayfinder Schools called Finding Our Way, which is a live moth-style, which is a radio show storytelling event with 10 different presenters, and that is on March 5th at 7 o'clock here. And the reason I'm bringing all this up, this Saturday, March 7th at 3:00 PM, is The Very Hungry Caterpillar and Other Eric Carl Favorites, and it's a theater group that's coming presenting that for children. So, and then, of course, in this June will be the Second Annual Jazz in June, which I mentioned every four-day jazz festival. But the reason I bring that up, in the events that I just mentioned, there is a tremendous amount of variety. There's music, there's theater, you know, one of the things that the management tries to do is present something for everybody, and I think it's real important, so a lot of great stuff coming up. And the last thing I want to mention, two weeks ago, family and I went to Lost Valley Snow Park near Auburn, and we went to go tubing. And we had an amazing time, and it was great to see how Lost Valley is, has, where they positioned and put in a tubing hill, which was great. As everybody knows, we had, tubing was a very popular event at the Snowball before we did the renovation, and unfortunately, the new renovation didn't have a place for tubing at this point. But looking at where they had positioned it, they came back and had some conversations. And as it turns out, I get more conversations about tubing than just about anybody. Allison just posted about it this past week on Facebook. Audra mentioned that she gets more conversations about where's tubing, and that conversation with Beth Ward, the director at the Snowball, and she said she gets more conversations about tubing. So, Audra and I had a conversation, and she's going to investigate what it would take with Beth to see if we can bring back a tubing hill, and maybe as early as next year, because it's something that, when you see the example of the way Lost Valley did it, they did it past the ski things, which is where we need to put it, the ski hills. We can do it here, it's going to take a little creativity, but I think it's something important to the town and to the Snowball.
Thank you, Mark.
So, that's it.
Ms. Jenna?
I just have, I'll be very brief. I attended Historic Resources Committee, which they're doing some phenomenal things. I feel like it was a decade ago that I was there, but it was their meeting last month. One of the programs that they have going on is the recognition of historic homes in the Town of Camden. They actually had seven historic plaque applications at various levels, there are three tiers. You sort of start out with the basic, with your, if your house is 75 years or older, and you, they're doing a ton of research, a couple of the properties are potential national landmark properties. They're really hoping to get some additional volunteers to help research these applications. And I think if anyone is interested in that, please feel free to email me or email the Historic Resources Committee, the chair is wonderful, it's Eileen Curtis Kleiman.
Kleiman.
Yeah. I think, yeah, Eileen Curtis Kleiman, but yeah.
I didn't know that Curtis.
But maybe that, maybe she doesn't use that all the time, but Eileen Kleiman. And they are, I think it's really neat that some of the information that they found out for homeowners, and just was, I was captivated myself. And it was also great to see that that program is gaining some traction, there are brochures available in the town office that explain the program a little bit more. It's just kind of a neat thing, particularly to let people know about and investigate and to kind of learn a little bit more about your home, but also for those of us who are researchers, who can kind of go down that rabbit hole, who are excited about it, we definitely could use canvassing and research-type volunteers. So, I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Jenna. Audra?
I have nothing.
Good. Not good. No, I, just briefly, just an FYI, last week, MDOT did get the results of their bid for Route 1 North, the stretch from the State Park to Lincoln to the line, they got one bid. The one bid was $16.7 million. Just to put that in reference, when I started as chair of the, that committee for that stretch, the original budget was $5 million.
Holy moly.
Reason I mention is twofold, one is, you know, it's continuing to continue the market we're in, and anybody who thinks we're going to bid multiple projects and get low prices, I got to, I wanted to see what they're smoking. But most practically, to Audra's approach that she's been discussing during the Budget Committee, which is, you really cannot in this, any time, do a project starting in 2016 and expect it to be the same price in 2020, one. And you definitely can't expect that in this market. So it's double, it's a double whammy, just a FYI. With that...
So what's going to happen?
In my, I don't know, but in my opinion, they will not do it. In my opinion, there will be no MDOT projects done in the next year. They don't have the money, they, this, the, if you, the, one, actually it was a joint venture bid that they got, but the way contractors are looking at this, the fundamental problem is resources, labor. We live in a modest-sized state, so the amount of fundamental qualified resources to do construction are limited. They are saturated at this point, and I would have expected it right now to be slowed down, I've never seen a cycle this long in my career. But it's going to continue for a while, and it's going to, I think it'll affect the project from stop and go down to the, to the, to the water, the drainage project, I think it's going to affect everything for a while. So you need to revise strategies, that's the reason why I was bringing up which we've been doing in our capital planning.
But we weren't going to be paying for that one anyway, so.
Well, 80% of it is federal, 20% is state. So, so no, town, no, the town, no, you know, town doesn't, that's right, it's our tax dollars, but the town doesn't contribute to that. Anyhow, with that, I'll move on to the third item on our agenda, which is the approval of the Board Minutes for February 4th, 2020.
I make a motion that we approve the Board Minutes from February 4th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion or comment? All's in favor?
I just, I didn't read them, and so I...
You'll be punished later.
I don't know what the right thing to do is, I feel, I, but I just trust my, trust my colleagues and...
Yes, yes, I would trust your colleagues.
Rather than abstain?
Yes, yes. All right. 4-0, okay? Yep, thank you very much. On our consent agenda tonight, we have two items. One is the nomination of Grace Glover as the oldest resident to be presented with the Boston Kane, which is quite an honor, and to subsequently bring that award to her at her current residence. The second item would be the renewal of a vehicle license for the Owl and Turtle Bookstore on Bayview Street. Are there any objections to the consent agenda items? Hearing none, those two items are hereby adopted. Next, we want to go back to, I skipped, which was presentation by our Maine state entomologist. We're very happy to have Tom Smelk here tonight from the state of Maine to discuss, I won't call it a favorite topic, but it's something we have to address, because we're coming to spring when the brown-tailed moth may resurrect itself again. Tom, so, we thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for the intro, Bob. So, typically, this presentation is an hour long, but I cut it down to be 20 minutes or less, so I guarantee you there will be questions that would normally be answered, but I'll, I'll answer those after we're all done. Okay. So, brown-tailed moth is an invasive moth, originally from Europe, came to the U.S. in 1897 into Summerville, Massachusetts, in a shipment of roses, and by 1917, it had spread throughout the Northeast and into Southern Canada. And it is related to gypsy moth, which comes into play a little bit later.
I look at that picture, I start itching.
Yes.
Me, too.
So, brown-tailed moth is not a picky eater, has an extremely wide host range, but some of the trees that we see it in, in Maine, most commonly are oaks, apple, birch, cherry, any fruit trees basically, elm, poplar, and various other hardwoods. But by far, oak, apple, cherry, and birch, those are by far the most common that we see. Okay, so, introduced in Summerville, Massachusetts in 1897, it's been established in Maine since 1904, so well over 100 years. In the early 1900s, when brown-tailed moth started to become a problem, people realized it was going to be a huge problem. Extensive control efforts were made, winter webs were clipped and burned by the tens of thousands. There is a, a winter web bounty paid to schoolchildren, five cents for every hundred that they would bring in.
A hundred?
For every hundred, yeah. This is early 1900s. Spray project for initiative, apple trees were cut down, so this photo is at a farm school, in addition to doing their yearly apple pruning, they are teaching students how to go up and clip out those brown-tailed moth winter webs. Some of, around 1911, this list on the bottom is some of the stuff that they're spraying, arsenic lead, pyroxyl, bordeaux mixture, kerosene tobacco soap, porto lead, something called bug death. Many of these things are not available anymore, because we know the human health impacts as well as the environmental impacts.
The bordeaux mixture wasn't lying.
Ah, it might have been. It might have been related to, great.
Bordeaux mixture.
Okay, so you can see in Summerville, Massachusetts, that's where, it was introduced in 1897, 17 years later, you know, throughout basically all of New England, up into Southern Canada, New Brunswick and Nova Scotia, there's even a little bit on the tip of Long Island in New York, down at the bottom there. So, it's very good at hitchhiking, 17 years to go from one introduction to, to most of the Northeast. So, parasitoid predators were released, so a parasitoid is an insect that lays its eggs inside another insect, and when those eggs hatch, the larvae consume whatever insect it was laid in, mostly flies and, flies and wasps. So earlier on, in the middle of the 19th century, in 1869, gypsy moth was introduced, the worst forest pest in this country, and still is the worst forest pest in this country. So when they realized in the 1870s, when gypsy moths was going to be a problem, they released a bunch of flies and wasps to control gypsy moth. A lot of those were generalists. Fast forward a few decades to when brown-tailed comes on the scene, a lot of these generalist parasitoids that were released for gypsy moth made the jump over to brown-tailed and did give some control. And then there was also another set of releases made for, specifically for brown-tailed. So, late teens, early twenties, there was a huge population collapse, huge population reduction, which, so, that 1914 is the maximum extent, and then in the teens and twenties, it fell back to that darker area, and there was continual population collapses for the next few decades. They didn't take extremely great notes back then, so we can't be sure what exactly caused the population decline, but it was likely due to a combination of those flies and wasps that they released, but also a huge part in due to this fungus that attacks brown-tailed called Entomophaga alechi. And the fungus, in combination with the cool, wet weather during those decades, sort of helped the fungus spread and proliferate and control brown-tailed. So the primary problem with brown-tailed, it's not necessarily a devastating forest pest like gypsy moth, but it does obviously involve some human health impacts. So caterpillars are covered in these tiny barbed and hollow hairs, and... So caterpillars are covered in these tiny barbed and hollow hairs, and the hairs are filled with a toxin that causes irritation. So you're getting mechanical irritation as well as chemical irritation. They break off pretty easily and they become airborne and are carried in, carried in the air, and they settle on leaves and brush. And that's one of the number one ways that people come into contact with these hairs is by doing yard work, raking leaves, mowing their lawn, moving brush, opening camp. So they'll, these hairs persist more when they are sheltered, when they're in an area that doesn't get a whole lot of rain or snow. So under people's decks, under boat trailers, under cars, stuff like that. So the toxin is very stable in the environment, classed between one to three years, less if it's, you know, in the middle of your, your yard that gets a lot of rain and will help dampen, dampen hairs and sort of incorporate them into the soil. So now, I'll just go through the life cycle generally. So we'll start with what they are right now. So they're in these winter webs that they spun basically last, last, late last summer, early fall. So they're sort of hibernating in there. So each one of these webs has between 25 and 400 caterpillars inside each one. And keep in mind, they're only about the size of the palm of your hand, at most about the size of your hand, never any bigger than that. But 400 caterpillars per web is quite a lot. They can also be quite variable. Typically, it's sort of a mix of equal parts silk and leaves, but on that picture on the bottom right, it can be basically one leaf that's sort of soaked together and the silk's on the inside. And some areas in the coast, like up into your aisle, it's almost exclusively silk. You can't even see any of the leaves in there. So this is a pretty common site in most of coastal Maine. So if you are wondering if you have brown-tailed moth, winter webs in your yard and trees around your yard, basically on a nice sunny day like it was today, or like it will be tomorrow, stand with your backs to the sun, look at the trees, and that white, fresh silk is gonna shine whitish and silvery and, and really stand out. It's sort of, when you see it, it'll, it'll make a lot more sense. But those are winter webs up on the top of the oak trees. This is a winter web that we brought into the lab. This was last year. But each one of those tiny little sprinkles, little squiggles, those are, those, all those caterpillars came out of that one nest. So again, tons of caterpillars per nest. Okay, fast forward to the spring, mid-April, late May, usually when the temperature's becoming 50 degrees pretty reliably, these brown-tailed caterpillars are gonna emerge from their winter web, and they're gonna sort of bask on the outside of that web, getting warm, and then they'll go out and feed either the newly emerged leaves. But if the timing's not right, they will mine the buds out. So that picture on the right, just above the thumb, you can see one caterpillar there and those two dark spots on the buds are where the caterpillars have gone in and mined out the buds because they came out, the leaves weren't ready when they were ready to eat. So from mid-April until late June, they're gonna feed on the foliage. Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
There's, okay. Okay, so from, basically from mid-April until late June, they're gonna be feeding on the foliage and growing. And each time they shed their skin, they're gonna be growing a little bit larger. So each caterpillar can molt between five to eight times. So by the time they're going into the webs from last summer, last fall, they've already molted three or four times. So when they come out, they'll molt another four times. So each time they molt and they shed that skin, those cast skins have toxic hairs on them. So it's the caterpillars that have toxic hairs, the cast skins, each time they grow larger have the toxic hairs. And then when they turn into pupa, which is the next slide, those also have toxic hairs incorporated into them. So in late June, early July, caterpillars are gonna be roaming around, looking for a nice sheltered place to spin a cocoon and pupate and turn into a pupa, which in turn will turn into a moth. So often, they'll go under the eaves of people's houses, they'll, I get tons of calls each year, them swarming decks and going outside the house. Campers, boat trailers, RVs, cars that have been parked for more than a few days, all serve as nice sheltered places for these caterpillars to, to spread their, to spin their cocoons, which is one of the ways that they spread through that hitchhiking. But oftentimes, they'll pupate right on the leaves, so they're sort of hard to see, but they're basically big, big clumps of leaves that are all soaked together, and they can be more than one individual inside each one of these, each one of these pupal cocoons. And so when they are turning into pupa, they're at the most vulnerable state, life stage. So they are gonna incorporate those toxic hairs from the caterpillar stage into that silk. So anything going to disturb them will come into contact with those hairs. Okay. And then the moths are gonna emerge from the cocoons in July. So this is why it is called brown-tailed moth. The abdomen is covered with these dark brown hairs. These are not the toxic hairs that you have to worry about. Again, the toxic hairs are just on the caterpillars, pupa, and the shed skins. So adult moths are attracted to lights, although it is, the sex ratio is heavily weighted towards males. For every 20 males a light, there's only one female. Anecdote evidence suggests that the females sort of hang out on the host foliage, just out of the reach of the light, waiting for, for males to come in and find them. So one of the questions that I always get is, you know, putting out a bug zapper or attracting to lights and sucking them up with a vacuum cleaner. There's been a few people that have done that, and I got to talk with them a few months later, this fall, and they've noticed that there's more brown-tailed moth webs in their trees than when they were not having their lights on all, all night long. So there's just some anecdotal evidence there. I intend to sort of test the sex ratio some of these summer nights, by just counting, you know, sex ratio, how many males, how many females. But just in general, we sort of recommend that people keep their lights off between 10:00 and midnight. Keeping your lights off at night's good for a lot of different things, but brown-tailed is just another reason. Mid-July, the female, mated females are gonna lay the eggs, and it's egg mass under, on the underside of host leaf, host tree leaves. And she's gonna cover that egg mass and those hairs from her abdomen. Again, not the toxic hairs you have to worry about, it's just an added leather, layer of physical protection for the eggs. You can see these little caterpillars hatching out, and they're going out to feed communally. Each female will lay between 200 and 400 eggs in these egg masses, and they're gonna prefer non-current year defoliated. So if the trees were defoliated in the spring and early summer, they're gonna tend to not go back to those same trees. But in really high populations like you have here, they will go on to, to trees that have been foliated this year. Eggs are gonna hatch in August. And then from August, and depending on the weather, sometimes we see it up until early October, if it's warm enough, the caterpillars are gonna start feeding communally. And they don't necessarily eat the entire leaf. What they're doing is they're grazing on this outer surface of, of the leaf. It's called skeletonization. After the surface of the leaf is eaten off, the cat, the leaf will die and turn sort of a coppery bronzer, bronzer color. We do two aerial surveys each year, or two sets of aerial surveys each year, one in the spring, late spring, early summer, to map the actual defoliation from mature caterpillars. And then we also do a fall, late, late summer, early fall flight to see if we can pick up some of the skeletonization. At this time, in late summer, early fall, these caterpillars are gonna start building this winter web. So the more, generally, the more caterpillars there are, the more silk there is gonna be. But I believe there's other environmental factors that add to that. It's just generalized life cycle, summarizing what we just talked about. But the highest risk exposure for hairs is April through July. But remember, in high infested areas, the danger for hairs is sort of ever-present in those sheltered areas. Current situation in Maine, so this current population outbreak started in 2015, and we've seen a pretty precipitous spike in the population. Some good news, this past spring, we did see localized population collapses due to some of the pathogens, including, including the bacillus virus and the fungus that attacks brown-tailed. And then when we did those late summer, early fall aerial surveys, we detected less damage in some areas than we did the previous spring. Just to give you an idea, this is 2018, so these two combined is 126,000 acres. Compare that to 2003, when at most, there is 11,000 acres, so quite a huge jump up. So those localized population collapses, so for the most part, we saw these population collapses in the core, or the historically high area, which is typically Yarmouth, Cumberland, Freeport, that sort of area. And what happened, so we're currently doing a, the winter web survey that we do annually to develop a risk map that we, and we assign a risk rating for each town. So down in that area, Freeport, Yarmouth, Cumberland, there's still a lot of webs, but it's about half as many as there were last year. You guys up here, Camden, Rockport, Lincolnville, you guys are sort of on the leading edge of the infestation, so-
Great.
The numbers are high, and we didn't see a ton of fungal death in the periphery, but that's because there's a, there's more of a history of the fungus and the caterpillar in, in Freeport and Camden and that, or Freeport and Yarmouth and Cumberland in that area. There's a high density of spore, of resting spores built up in the soil. Here, not so much. You guys are sort of experiencing this huge population for the first time, and it's been ongoing in those areas for five years now. So you guys are sort of on the leading edge. This is an apple orchard in Turner, which is sort of removed from the main bulk of the population, and we set up monitoring sites, which we will be doing again this year. We saw the weather forecast, thought it was gonna be cool and wet in May and June, and knew that it was ripe for a fungal outbreak. And in May, we started seeing these caterpillars. This one's died sort of in situ. You can see how it's a little bloated, and if you look closer, it has these whitish fruiting bodies on it. So another research site that we had in Whitefield, again, this gentleman had called me, a bunch of fruit trees around his house, young oak trees, completely defoliated. You can see where all these leaf nubs are. They are starting to flush out new leaves here. But more caterpillars than there were leaf nubs. And so I set up as a monitoring site, came back two weeks later, after we had been getting a lot of rain, and there was almost 100% mortality. Even caterpillars that crawled away from the house, or crawled away from the tree onto the house, had sort of died right on the side of the house. This is some of the aerial survey data, or some aerial survey images. This is Camden Hills. A little difficult to see, but these gray patches here are defoliated, are oak trees that have been completely defoliated by brown-tailed moth, mature caterpillars. This is another angle, that same shot. So all of this area, this is the most dense, but it's sort of, this whole area was, anywhere there's oaks, or apples, or cherries, they were pretty severely defoliated. Almost towards the end here, so just a couple of points. So cold winter temperatures don't kill brown-tailed moth. They are from Europe, and they're roughly at the same latitude, they evolved roughly at the same latitude that we are, so they're already adapted to our coldest winters and our warmest summers. So these colder temperatures in the winter don't kill them. They have antifreeze proteins in their, in their insect blood. Cool, wet spring conditions do kill brown-tailed, because they help proliferate that, the spread of that fungus. Key time for those, that cool, wet weather is May and June. That's when the caterpillars are out, active, feeding, and they're more likely to pick up the fungus. One of the reasons why we have these informational sessions in the winter is because if you are able to prune, even just a couple webs, you can see how many caterpillars are in each web. So you're potentially taking out a few hundred caterpillars with just a couple of webs. And when you do prune them, if you are able to reach them, so you're gonna want to destroy them, either by burning or, burning them or soaking them in soapy water for a couple of days, just to make sure you got them all. Risk of exposure with the hairs is very low in the winter, although we do recommend that if you know that you're a sensitive individual, just take all the proper precautions. And you're gonna, again, wanna destroy these webs. If you clip them and leave them on the ground, those caterpillars, even though they're very small, are very good at finding food, and they'll just march right back up the tree. You're gonna wanna do this before mid-April, again, because those caterpillars are gonna become active again, and control will be less effective. Chemical control, trying to get them before the end of May. Again, those caterpillars are gonna be fairly large, and even if you do kill the caterpillars, you're not gonna be reducing your risk exposure to hairs. There's just still gonna be a ton of dead body, dead caterpillar bodies in your yard with those hairs. When you do this, you're gonna wanna hire a licensed pesticide applicator and/or a licensed arborist. We do have a list of pesticide applicators and arborists on the Maine Forest Service website that are willing to do brown-tailed. And again, the control is more effective if widespread. So if you're doing it, but your neighbors aren't doing it, it's gonna be less effective. I think we're running short on time, but these are three bi-rational pesticides, or quote-unquote naturally derived pesticides that are, that a lot of pesticide applicators use to control brown-tailed moth in Maine. But I think we're sort of short on time. So that's all I have for you tonight. But there's a lot of innovative ideas sort of flying around, and one of your neighbors, Patrick McCafferty, has some, some innovative ideas that he's gonna talk to you guys about.
Hold on, hold that picture.
Hold that picture.
Dramatic fact, I'm kinda gonna point to you, and then let's get it up there. Where's that cool laser thing?
I could take that, too.
It's attached, the VCA thing.
Are there any negative impacts of any of those pesticides that you?
So it's been also, it's not.
Maybe, are you gonna do questions after?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do questions.
I'll make this brief.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to Tom in a minute. I'm sure people have questions here.
Yeah. My name is Patrick McCafferty, and I'm a Camden resident. Actually, I'm the vice chair of the Camden and Rockport School Boards right now. We're meeting as we speak, so shout out to my fellow board members.
Oh, wow.
Told you I was doing something important. And I'll be there soon. And so, in interest of time here, I will make this brief. So technology to the rescue, maybe. Before I continue, I did just want to reiterate that my idea in terms of a solution is purely conceptual at the moment. Oh, Allison, you-
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
That's it.
This is, it's okay. That's it.
I'm normally doing it for my computer.
No, no, I, it's okay.
I'm just joking, and I'm not-
It's all right. We'll, we'll work on that.
We'll be okay.
Yeah. And if you, so my idea right now is purely conceptual, and if you want to address brown-tailed moths right now, you know, like Tom said, your best bet is mechanical pruning through a licensed arborist. And also, the injections are basically the second most effective method. I can make a recommendation right now. We got Shane Hendricks in the house, who I've been referring for just this, because he is a licensed arborist, one of the few licensed arborists I know who's also licensed to deploy the insecticide injections. So that's pretty crucial. So I grew up here in Camden, I'm a local masonry contractor, and early this winter, I was hired to inspect five large chimneys on an estate here in Camden. And I deployed a drone to measure the chimneys and capture extremely high-definition pictures of their condition. And- condition, and while I was there, I was admiring the massive oak trees all around the property, so with permission from the homeowner, I asked the drone operator to fly over the remainder of the five acres of the property, and record, you know, and document evidence of the brown-tailed moss and where they were, and even leave a breadcrumb trail of GPS coordinates, which I then passed off to Dominic Fontaine, God bless him, of Cliffside Tree Services, and, sorry Shane, and gave him the coordinates, and he went to work pruning out the nests out of the trees. One problem that I could see immediately was, we could only reach what was near the road, or what was accessible with the bucket truck. The remainder, the majority, the vast majority, was in the inner woods, the inner canopy of the trees, and, you know, which would mean an arborist has to go, and since the brown-tailed moths pretty much exclusively congregate in the upper canopy of the tree, you know, as far in the thinnest of the branches as possible, up at the very tippy-top, it makes it pretty arduous for an arborist to climbing around up there on the tiny branches, I'm sure they don't love it either.
No, we have a 92-foot spider web, so...
Oh, yeah.
You can go pretty much penetrate anywhere.
Yeah, awesome. So, to address this problem, I just started to design a drone that carries an air-powered cannon that shoots high-velocity bursts of biodegradable pellets, which pulverize and shred the nest, thereby exposing the tiny caterpillars to the elements. This is the drone, as drawn by a child, and this is the business end, it's actually quite a simple mechanism, you have basically an air canister here, and then a, basically, an airsoft launcher here that already exists, so this technology already exists, and right here is a pan-and-tilt mechanism that allows you to, and, you know, and on here, it would be a camera that allows you to move the cannon and kind of aim, and then fire at extremely high velocity, where it's about 450 feet per second, about half of what a shotgun would produce, but at a close range, and pulverize most of the nests in the process, and expose the rest of the caterpillars, which are very small at this stage, to the elements, and it seems like their nemesis at the moment isn't so much the cold, because I believe they carry a cryoprotein that helps them survive the cold quite easily, but their nemesis seems to be moisture, and the blast from the air cannon shreds the nest seems to compromise its hydrophobic capabilities, thereby it loses its functionality, ceases to protect the caterpillars, the very small caterpillars, from moisture, and makes them more susceptible to just death in that way, or possibly more susceptible to this fungus that does seem to propagate more with moisture.
Hold on, does it shoot only air, or does it have a, like a pellet?
It shoots about 36 pellets at a time.
What kind of, what are the pellets made of?
Borax and resin. So, they, unfortunately, you know, there's some customization that could be done with the pellets that would make them even more biodegradable. The borax, the current ones on the market dissolve fairly slowly, but they're basically benign to the environment, so we've even talked about lacing them with permethrin to have a secondary impact on ticks. Yeah, awesome, right? I don't think Tom thinks this is a good idea, right? We don't wanna shoot permethrin all over the place. Or maybe it was, I've also discussed this with a, you know, one of the world's leading entomologists, Raymond Cloyd, which I guess you only end up with the distinction of a world-class entomologist if you give the keynote address at most of the entomology conferences in the world, and that's Raymond Cloyd, and he doesn't like the permethrin, but, doesn't, it's just, that was just a cool idea, you know, kicking it around. So, I'm in the development stage right now, and basically finished with the design, all of those pieces and parts exist, the pan-and-tilt mechanism, the trigger mechanism, the, everything that exists, basically, all comes as a ready-made package from an Israeli defense company. The drone is a, yeah, who uses it for other purposes, obviously? The drone is a high-capacity drone, this isn't your typical drone, it's, you know, where a typical drone is $2,000, $3,000 maximum, this one's about $52,000, because it can lift up to 37 pounds, and it not only runs on a battery, it also deploys gasoline, which in turn charges the battery much like your car does. So, it can stay airborne for three hours, as opposed to a drone which can stay airborne for maybe 15 minutes.
Hold on, have you already tried the shooting mechanism to make sure it does, do you know that that breaks up the...
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
So, it's just a matter of combining it with the drone?
Uh-huh. I have fired numerous projectiles at brown-tailed moth nests, collected specifically from the property I'm working on, that we had cut out of the trees. The most effective, also, everybody, is a shotgun.
That's not publicized, that.
Right.
That's good to know.
But if you, there's town ordinances that regulate that. At the moment, it seems to be within, in Camden, I believe it's within 1,000 feet of a residence, not really feasible around here, but you live in Appleton, get yourself a shotgun and blast away.
And Bill, my mom's...
Tom, hopefully in the question-answer.
I've actually seen that tried when we were working next door, and it's not...
Let's, let's...
Right, the mistake they're making is you have to put a choke on the end of the barrel. It'll...
What's your overall schedule for the development of this package?
Send us some videos, we'll put them on the town Facebook page, and we'll be the judge.
What's your overall schedule for development of this concept, if you have any?
It's fluid, I'm extremely busy at the moment in my actual job, and, but, the good news is, is I've had contact, I've been approached by a couple of members, actually, somebody that Tom had mentioned, and actually, who ended up getting in touch with me, from the University of Maine Extension, and an individual from Boston Dynamics, who actually builds robots now at the moment, he says, "This is a piece of cake." They are interested in building this, and they've built similar projects to measure well-migration and deter rhino poaching in Africa, so they are tooled up and ready to go.
How does people get in touch with you? They wanna...
Are you getting in touch with me?
Yeah.
Google me, find me at Hannaford.
School board website?
School board website's great, Patrick McCafferty, we'll do PatMcCafferty@gmail.com, yeah, 21 Jacob Sav, Ask Jenna, any of those things, so, that's it for me.
Cool. Patrick, good luck with it, keep us, but please keep us posted on how it develops, I'd love to see this thing flying.
Certainly.
Thank you. Tom, would you mind coming? I'm sure people have some questions they'd like to ask, and wish we had more entrepreneurs like Pat that come up with more good ideas like this, but that'll happen in time if because, thank you, Patrick, thank you very much.
Anita should get together with Pat, this is kinda like the videos Anita was sending her ago.
Does anybody from the public have any questions of Tom's presentation about the brown-tailed moth besides Jeremy? No, Jeremy, you put your hand up first, Jeremy, put his hand up first. Pass it around if you would, Jeremy.
Really quick, just, you know, we've got a lot of oak trees, obviously, here in town, especially around McGonagall Lake, and we have shoreline zoning, clearing standards and all that, when you, for tree removal. So, question, you know, you talked about like that, there's a photo, I think that was Route 17, maybe, coming into, or 90, coming into Rockland, where that whole forest stand of oak right along the lake, along the water was, how many years can those mature oaks handle that before they end up dying off?
So, typically, tree mortality doesn't usually occur, unless it's two or three years of success, successive defoliation. Some of these areas in coastal Maine, so the oaks are being hit with brown-tailed, winter moth, in some locations, also gypsy moth, and on the droughts that we've had for the past few summers, and in some areas, it's all four. But typically, three years, they'll hold on, they'll flush out leaves, but if it's multiple stressors, it might be, might be less than that, but I do believe those, that stand of oak trees did flush out again later in the summer.
I need to supplement that answer.
If you live near water, especially McGonagall, get in touch with the McGonagall watershed, especially Leslie, they're working on a comprehensive mechanical solution at the moment, I've given them Shane's number, and basically just wanna make a concerted effort to attack the population, eliminate as many as possible mechanically right now.
Thank you, Pat. Anita, you had your hand up.
Sure, and just following up, and I'll walk this over to Anita, I mean, we're getting, our office is getting calls about removing trees because of that in the shoreline zone, and the law does not allow us to do that, so people cannot remove those trees. They can do the mechanical pruning, of course, but we can't cut trees down in the shoreline zone.
Yeah, so just to touch one last little point on that, so a lot of people see that their...
Sorry about that.
So, a lot of people see that their trees are completely defoliated for one year, and they think that the trees are dead, and they wanna cut them down, just wait to see if they flush out another set of leaves before you decide to cut them.
Yeah. Anita?
Thank you, great. I'm a big fan of drone control, because I didn't see any other way to get up to the very tippy tops of those mature oak trees, but I was wondering why you settled on the beads approach rather than a little propane torch, yeah?
A number of reasons, safety, a propane tank is explosive and heavy, it also doesn't shoot very far, the gas, the pressurization relies on the tank, and the pressure the propane itself creates within the tank, that pressure continues to go down as the propane gets used and the tank gets colder, and the range of the wand starts to go from about three feet maximum to about one foot maximum.